We're going to move on to item eight, comments from council members. Item A, we'll start with Councilmember Mason. Possible council resolution affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the black community and condemn racism. Councilmember Mason.
Okay, great, thank you, councilmembers, city manager, city attorney, and everybody who's still on this meeting right now. So recently Brisbane passed a similar measure through their city councils as well, and I think San Bruno is in a position to do the same, given the diversity that we have in San Bruno. You know, we talked about our commitment about, I wouldn't say at our last meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, to equality and to justice. And the reality is that a lot of things happen and a lot of words are spoken, but it's forgotten about shortly after an incident, or shortly after, you know, the news media's regular rotation. And so I think this is an opportunity for the city of San Bruno to continue the conversation around what is really happening. Unfortunately, I think it's focused solely on police and the black community, because the injustice that we saw with George Floyd is really the worst repercussion you can have, which is death, and you can't come back from death. But I think that this resolution is more than death, it's more than this extreme. It's saying that, and reiterating, that equality exists in so many different areas in our society. The National Institute of Health has said that blacks are less likely to have health insurance from private employers than their white counterparts. The CDC has said that pregnancy-related deaths per 100 live births for black women older than 30 was four to five times as high as it was for their white counterpart women. The CDC has also said that the death rate for black infants is twice that of infants born to non-Hispanic white mothers. The Brooks Institute, most recently, has released information regarding COVID-19, and said that black people are dying from COVID-19 at the same rate as white people that are more than a decade older than them. And amongst those 45 years old, rates of death amongst the black community are at least six times higher than whites. Six times higher than whites, everybody. So what I'm asking tonight is for us to stand in solidarity on what I believe is really the right side of history, to say that we stand in solidarity with the black community, and we continue to be committed to condemning racism and working towards equality, which we're doing right now with our work around law enforcement. The chief has been, I think, very responsive, the city manager has been very responsive, they're working on a report for us. So this is really just continuing the message, that it's not just what we've seen with George Floyd, it's making sure that we're equal in the most important areas in all of our lives, in healthcare, in education, and in our really civil liberties. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your words. Are there any, so obviously it is on the agenda, so we can have open discussion and dialogue, and I think the councilmember has brought forward a proposal, and is seeing if there's willingness, or, and I would think she's also, I'm sure, open like, does it need to include this, or not, or whatever, but it's an open dialogue, so. Councilmember Medina?
Yes, I'm in support of this. It was one thing, a great thing, to have a statement that was read by, collaborated by all of us, and then read by all of us. I think this takes it to another level with the resolution, with the strong supporting And so how we come to write this, I'm also open to it, and Linda did a great job before, so this is her idea, but I'm backing it, so however we need to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I think Michael's muted.
Vice Mayor, are you talking, or no? You were muted.
Yeah, so I definitely appreciate Councilmember Mason's passion around this, and, you know, the statistics that she quoted are shocking, and there's definitely a lot of work to be done on a national level. My only concern is that issuing another proclamation is really just, we're putting words on paper again, and we've done that before. And honestly, if we're, if we really want to address this issue, and we have these issues in San Bruno, which is a population that we were elected to represent, I would like us to take some concrete actions, and just move past the words. We've issued the words, we've made the statements, we've attended the rallies, but if these issues exist in our community, then I would really like us to take some action to address them. And I would propose that maybe our next step should be really examining what's happening in San Bruno. How do these, how do these national statistics manifest themselves in our community? What inequalities are we seeing in our community? And address those, not just, you know, in broad sweeping terms, but in real actions that we can take. And so I would say we need to go further than just a proclamation, we need to really examine what's happening in our city, and address those issues. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Here I am, again agreeing with Michael. You know, I made this comment to a council meeting last year, when we came forward with San Bruno Cares. And I was, I think it's a great thing, we've got these posters made, and what is it, a picture opportunity in San Bruno Cares, but what's it really mean? You know, I'm so tired of hearing the words, I mean, I see the social media posts, I see people put things up, and it's, you know, it's the, you know, thing to do right now, so, you know, you change your social media page all black, and you sell these great things, but you know what, I want to live something 365 days a year, and I want something to get catchy into our community, and then our community becomes part of something that's bigger than that. And I think it's about action, it's about doing things. You know, I don't know, maybe a subcommittee of councilmembers that can look at, you know, what are some things we can do, but, you know, somebody posted on Nextdoor, I don't, I try to really stay away from Nextdoor and posting, because they're just, send you down a bad rabbit hole. But I'm constantly on it, and looking at resident comments and whatnot, but somebody posted a picture of doing some cleanup, and taking, picking up garbage, and then the next person, you know, said, you know, we should do that, we should go out and do that. And it's about that kind of thing, it's about starting a movement and letting it carry forward. You know, I go out and pick up garbage, I picked up garbage over the weekend, I never, I don't post pictures of what I do, and how I support our community, but I want to see everybody reach out to our community. I mean, do you know, and do you realize, the amount of depression that's going on in our community? Do you realize the teenagers are struggling because they're not back in high school? Do you realize the child abuse that's going on in our community? Do you realize the domestic violence that's going on in our community? And do you realize the people who have attempted suicide in our community? And I know them. And we have big issues, and not to say that this is not a big issue, but we've got to do something, and really do something positive for our community, and really try to unite our community, all of our community, regardless of race, regardless of nationality, regardless of the color of their skin, about being, you know, good people to each other, about giving back to our community, about helping one another. I'd like to see us do something, I really would, and I just, you know, I think what we did, getting together and reading a message, I think that was pretty special. You know, I have young adults, and I cannot tell you how passionate they are. You know, to hear my daughter, who's 22 years old, talk about her passion, and really, the opinions are so strong, and she's really educated me, and I'm actually proud to say that she's my daughter, and I'm proud for her words and her passion about, you know, what's going on in this community, and in our society, and she really educated me. We've got to get the young people involved. I think it's something that we really, they're so powerful, they're so amazing, and they can spread the message, and we can do some good things. So I look forward to doing something that's really going to make change, and make people feel like they're welcome. I never want anybody to ever feel like they can walk into a store, walk into a restaurant, walk into a public facility and not feel welcome, regardless of who they are. Thank you.
Well, thank you to everybody, and thank you for Councilmember Mason bringing this up. I'm also, the actions speak louder than words, I'd like to see it maybe even go further. I'd like to see, you know, when we talk about racism, I think just like, hey, it should be condemned for anyone and everyone. And I know there was a staff member who shared with me an incident in Burlingame where they stayed in the coffee shop because somebody was screaming at an employee who happened to be of Asian descent. We have a councilmember that is a neighbor of ours, who experienced that when he was trying to grocery shop months ago. And so I think, I think we need to bring it up, because it's not acceptable anywhere, and I think we need to get to that point, and I think a resolution is, you know, like we're saying, it's there, but what can we do better? Where can we go further with it? How can we introduce it more and more tangibly? I know one of our statements, the one that we read together, was, you know, "We call on our San Bruno family to actively participate in this campaign by turning words into actions 365 days a year." And so I would like to see if we can't, again, collaborate, maybe start with a subcommittee, and start to find a way to, you know, with school being virtual too, potentially, some of it, you know, maybe we can help introduce something, maybe there can be something that's done, and I agree with Councilmember Davis, the young people, on my block, you know, somebody had Black Lives Matter, then it became here, then I gave the poster, and we stand against hate, and so that came up. And maybe those are minor things, but that's just starting to meet your neighbor, that's starting the dialogue, it's sending a clear message. And so I'd like to see us do something that is grassroots and grows. And I think we bring other of our groups, when I say groups, and maybe it's a culture and arts, maybe it's other folks, together to enlighten, and to educate, and to be more tolerant. Because unfortunately, it is, for some of us, whereas we're maturing, you know, we haven't done it right. And so we need to look to the youth, and them be the foundation that will lead us better than we are today. So those are my comments. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, Medina was first.
Oh, Councilmember Medina, thanks.
So I think we're all right on this. It starts with talking about it, right? You've got to talk about what the problems are, you put a resolution in for a call to action, you have a subcommittee made up, we get different community members together, we can do it through Zoom, that's all we can really do right now, right? Getting the community and the schools together, and having these discussions, and putting together an action plan of what that is. I, right now, don't know what the action plan is. I try my best to show my son to treat people the way you want to be treated, regardless of anything, doesn't matter. So I, I think this is, this is the start of something, where you actually talk about it, and then we move forward. So thank you, Councilmember Mason.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that, I think, you know, I'm not sure if anybody else on the council requested action, but I have requested a review of our policies in law enforcement, and City Manager Grogan has actually, in his own newsletter, committed to doing so on his own behalf. So I think we are looking at taking action, I don't think this is just words. But as much as I think the youth are the power of tomorrow, this council didn't support a youth seat on Measure G, this council didn't support two extra seats for diversity, and this council is the highest elected council in San Bruno, we are the leadership. And by not pursuing something like this, it's another message to our communities of color. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. But I just lost my thought on, so there is, you know, I still would like to see us, again, my ask would be that we go after just racism too. And I understand the statistics you read are very powerful, and I know I've had somebody who's talked to me about the Latin community, and what they're suffering with COVID and other stuff, and so I think we're all wanting to do something, we want to leave it better than we found it today, and I think that means broadening our net, and then bringing folks together. And let's be honest, some people have time right now, whether it's Zoom or not, that I'm sure would love to be a part of this. And I'd like to see us try to get something established. And Councilmember Mason is correct, I've asked the city manager too about the policing early on, and we've gotten some information, and I think they are, you know, it's being taken serious, and it really is having some actions, and that's something at the appropriate time for the community to know as well, that their leaders, as well as the city manager and the police chief, are committed to reviews and improving where we can. So, and I know that's off on the side, so I'd like to see us broaden the net, and maybe that's not the right word to use, but on the racism, I'd like to see it condemned on a broader perspective. And I have not seen the Brisbane resolution, to be honest, so I don't know what it says specifically. So I apologize, I just didn't know. So right now, Councilmember Mason, unless I'm hearing wrong, I think I'm hearing from council collectively, is to do more, try to have some actionable items, have people meet, whether it's a subcommittee, and bringing others together, and maybe we find that we want to address a few things, not, you know, because I think there are things that need to be addressed in a more global fashion, but I do agree, let's hear for the items that we can maybe take action for in our community that'll improve it.
I do think, I think based on the process, we do take a vote, right? Because if it's a majority, it moves forward, and if it's not, then it doesn't. So I think, just for the record.
So I guess, as you've asked, I'm going to ask, can we send this to a committee so we can bring back, if you want, if we want a resolution, if we want to condemn racism in a broader space, if we want to come up with some ideas to engage with our school community, and with our local community, so that we can plan some things? I think it would also be a good opportunity for that group also to plan for November for Stand Against Hate, I think they could collaborate together and utilize that, so we get that in early process too, and that would be my ask.
I suspect since you're moving away from the original item, which was just issuing a resolution into forming a subcommittee, that probably would have to be agendized separately.
I don't know.
The attorney.
I would have to ask the city attorney that, guess who just came on? City attorney?
Please.
I think what it is, is if we want to try to establish, well, council subcommittee can be appointed, that's not challenging, there's an actual item here. The question is, does it have to be re-agendized in order to appoint a subcommittee to look into condemning racism, supporting in solidarity with the black community or other communities, and working on United Against Hate, and working on community?
Yes. So the answer is yes, it does need to come back to the city council to appoint a subcommittee that is not on the agenda as an action item, this is almost precisely the facts of a prior case where a city got in trouble because they had a public comment, and councilmember comments, and somebody wanted to appoint a subcommittee, and they did, without having that on the agenda. So I would recommend that.
Okay, so, all right, so much for me saying that, so thank you, Vice Mayor, so, unless folks want to consider a subcommittee, that can be on the next agenda, but I guess we can't really talk about that, I'd have to ask for it to be placed on the next agenda, so we'll put that off to the side. So, going to that, then, for me, I'd like to have, my ask is to bring it up at the next meeting, and make it more broad-based, and bringing in racism together, the Stand Against Hate, and bringing, with our schools in, and maybe hopefully have some answers to how they will be going to school going forward. So for that, okay, I'm going to ask, I will email the clerk asking for that to be on the next agenda, to do that, and maybe we can all brainstorm too, and then give ourselves a head start of what we can see, as far as its potential, but I don't want to narrow it, I'd like to see it, but I really do want to see something tangible, I think every one of us are saying that, we want to see something that is worth it, and is going to be hopefully long-lasting, beyond my time.
So, if I may, the mayor?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
The city attorney, should we take a vote? Because this was an issue that came up with one of our previous items, just for clarity.
If someone wants to make a motion, they're able to do so, and if it's seconded, there can be a vote. There's no legal requirement that there be votes on anything.
Oh, okay, because the process that was provided to us said that if there's a majority of the council, then it moves on to a staff report, there's actual work placed into the item as a staff report and a resolution, so majority, I figured, means three yeses.
Well, if there is a vote taken, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll motion to move forward with the possible, with the council resolution affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the black community and condemn racism.
Is there a second to Councilmember Mason's motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Medina, I'm sorry.
I definitely am in support of this, just, we talked about these other issues, so Linda, perhaps we could expand that, and with the idea that we're going forward to have a subcommittee that we're going to talk about what we're actually going to do, to agendize it, I think is what we're talking about. I think we're, we just kind of got really narrow again, where I think we could do a lot more, and actually get things, it all starts with talking, right? And we need to do that more, and invite the public to participate in that, and then we could actually start coming up with some action plan, you know, some metrics that we want to be able to do. And I think, I think currently, it's kind of got back to too narrow, and I'm okay with that too, but I think we've talked about getting this agendized, so we could do more, and that's what I'm interested in doing. Is there a way you could have a friendly amendment to that? And I'd be happy to second it.
Oh, okay, so, yes, yes, I'm open to that, so, how about?
And then, I'm going to, after Councilmember Mason, Councilmember Davis did have her hand up, but the other thing, or if you want to let her speak first, but the other thing too, is I think we can't expand, I don't think this, we have to put it on the agenda in a more expanded fashion, which I'm prepared to do, and commit to that, but anyway, thank you, Councilmember Medina.
Well, we can just give staff, I think if the city attorney's okay with this, but staff, just I guess some direction to broaden the scope, and within the resolution, actually have a plan to either create a subcommittee, or use an existing committee like Arts and Culture, and then have them actually tasked with, you know, how can we, in San Bruno, what are the areas maybe we need to address? I don't know, I mean, I think if we're going to broaden it, it is another discussion, and I don't want staff to be going on a fishing expedition.
Agreed, and that's why I feel it needs to be on the agenda, so we can broaden that dialogue discussion and appointment, and have some time to bring it forward, so all of us have our homework. Let me go to Councilmember Davis, who's had her virtual hand up.
Thank you. I would just say that I think we've jumped to a solution, and we should back up, so my support would be a no vote tonight, because I don't think we're there yet to determine that that's the solution going forward, that I'd like to have it brought back, to have a more open discussion on possible solutions, to try to, you know, encourage a better community, and a more supportive community, so, you know, maybe in the end, it does include a resolution, but I don't know, so I don't want to stick to one solution right now, until we really have that in.
So I think, Councilmember Mason, we're going to go back to you, Councilmember Medina had asked, and I think you're hearing from a couple of us, that we want to broaden, we want to have something with a more detailed conversation, that is more broad-based, more actionable, and are you comfortable with allowing that to occur in two weeks?
Yeah, I think, I will, I would just say, I think it dilutes, like, I think it dilutes the issue, because I think that right now, what's happening nationwide is really very focused on the black community, but I do, I did hear Commissioner Salazar, Councilmember Salazar, when he said, "Let's find out what's going on in San Bruno." So we're waiting to, you know, we're waiting right now on the police impact reports, and I think if there are other areas that we should look into, we should bring those up at the next council meeting, and then see which groups within San Bruno have, you know, some, I guess, areas that we need to look into, and then create an action plan there, or have a committee create an action plan. I would have liked the support tonight, but it sounds like the support is for a broader resolution and a broader action plan, so that's okay, we can work with that.
All right, I appreciate that. So, and I will go ahead and put in the email to the city clerk, to put this on for our meeting on the 28th, under Council Comments.
Thank you.
All right, with that, oh, I, with that, oh, I'm sorry, we're still on Council Comments, so Councilmember Mason, did you have any more comments from council?
Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure that we're requesting some kind of a plan for the library, and Parks and Recs, and I think most of the council agrees, I don't think that's new. I do really want to propose some kind of a cleaning schedule as staff comes back to work, I know we're short-staffed, but for those of you who are still on watching this, or who are going to watch this later, the city staff did an excellent job providing a resource booklet, probably about two months ago, to every resident in San Bruno. And within that book, there's a particular page that addresses homelessness in San Bruno, and the rules around homelessness with shelter in place. So now that we know that this is going to last longer, I just feel like for these two communities, it's really more of a burden than we anticipated at the beginning, and if possible, could we get on a monthly or a bi-weekly schedule to clean those two areas with some of our staff? Because if it wasn't for shelter in place, some of these encampments would probably have been moved by now. And then, that's it for now, oh, I'm sorry, and then just the cell tower, I have just a little note, I didn't know that all these applications have been approved, so it's just some kind of update on what's going on with cell towers, given all of the emails we received in the last two days. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Davis, did you have your hand up? Go ahead.
I was going through my notes from last meeting, and I forgot to email, but I wanted to, two issues, so number one is, oh, I mean, I would, I feel so bad for any resident that's living next to a homeless encampment, I can't imagine, I mean, the rats, the feces, you name it, the smell, the stench, and then your own safety, right? You come home at night, you're not even sure if you're in a safe environment, so anything we can do to help out those, I wholeheartedly support that. But I was reading my notes, and one of the things that I continue to think about, and wonder if we can come up with a better solution, is so, at the beginning of every meeting, we have public comment, and residents take the time to either show up to a meeting, or log into a Zoom, which I greatly appreciate, you know, we don't have all the answers, although we feel like we represent the community, we don't have all the answers, and so those residents who call up, who actually voice their concerns, we don't have a response for them, because we can't, right? As much as I want to reply to them, we can't. But it kind of triggered me tonight too, and when you gave the city clerk's email. So I was just wondering, since we're on Zoom, is there anything that we can, like, display, so that when a resident is calling in or talking, that they can see, you know, to email your concerns or questions, so that we could get staff follow-up? I would love to follow up with this resident that has a question, and have a dialogue with them. We've gotten a lot of emails from residents about the library, and I've had, I've sent out a ton of emails responding to them, because it's not just the library that's affected, it's a lot of departments that are being affected, and so we don't take these decisions very lightly. But it would be great to give a resident a response, who takes the time to communicate to the council about a concern or frustration that they have, that there's a process. So I just, I don't know if we can do, what we can do. So I just, I don't know if we can do, what we can do, because they're not now coming to the senior center. We can't actually go over to them and say, hey, can we get your phone number, can we get your email address? Is there something we can do to sort of bridge that gap so we really can figure out who these, who they are and find out if we can find a way to communicate with them? I just don't want their concerns and issues going unresolved. That's not good customer service. Thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments on that and I'll withhold talking about it so we don't have a discussion about it, right? Because it's not agendized and here we are at the end of the night, it's getting late. But excellent comments by all, we should figure something out on how to get back to people a little better. I just wanted to bring up, you know, this COVID. I got tested at a couple of weeks ago. It says I'm negative, so I'm glad to hear that, but you know what, that was two weeks ago, right? And so I just wanted everybody to keep that in mind, that it's just a snapshot and the numbers are going the wrong way. And we all, we all have to continue, you know, not trying to cheat and get around, well, it's okay to do this, you know, do as much as you can, stay home, wear your mask, wash your hands, all that good stuff, and we'll get through this sooner. It's because that wasn't happening that we're going through this longer, okay? So that's about it. Take advantage of those free testing here in San Bruno. It really, it it relieves some pressure, but then again, it's kind of like, okay, what about, what about tomorrow? Just be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, anything for you or are you good? Okay. For me, I I got my results back last night late. And at this point, on the eighth, when I got tested, I am negative at that point. But so I made it through the Fourth of July, but it's a very, it's a snapshot. It it shouldn't relieve anybody from feeling they can just go back to normal and you're okay. What I do want to say is I did want to thank some of the members of the Professional Firefire Association who volunteered at both locations that day. I wouldn't have recognized them anyway because they, you know, they've all got masks on and they're they're dressed in casuals because they're representing the association. And also, even when the governor came out with the instant order, we had staff that were walking down to businesses, handing out leaflets and getting education because not everybody's watching the governor. Then maybe they are. So staff has been proactive in trying to educate and communicate and that. And I think there is becoming a frustration level with folks and echoing what my colleagues are saying. And and really, we have to do what it takes because as I'm on a lot of calls or Zooms, as some of us are, the numbers are, you know, this county is not on the watch yet, but it easily could happen. So I know everybody's anxious, but we've got to do the right thing. And again, it's not just for yourself, but it's for the other person. So with that, we are going to go into, we're going to go back to closed session, Conference with Labor Negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. With that said, I want to thank everybody, all staff, and thank you colleagues, and thank you city clerk. And we're going to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on July 28, 2020. And the city manager sent us a new Zoom link for the second session. Thank you.